Regular session, please.
Salute.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Good evening, everyone. Hello, public. Thank you for coming. Whenever you're ready, Ken, please.
This meeting, which is hereby called to order, is in compliance with the notice requirements of the law. Public comment will be posted in the office for the Board of Education and communicated to the Municipal Clerk, the Gailey Records, and the Star Ledger on January 9th, 2017.
Very good. If we could all stand and salute our flag, please. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And when you're ready, Ken, please go. Okay. Mr. Brucio, Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Harrow. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Laurie?
Here.
Mr. Scarnio?
Here.
Mrs. Mullin?
Mrs. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Ruiz?
Here.
Mrs. Shower?
Here.
Thank you very much. And good evening again, public. Tonight, we are having one public comment portion. It's a longer meeting tonight for us since it is our board retreat. So our first public comment is open to any items whatsoever, not just agenda items as it normally is. If you stand, you give us your name, your address. We'll provide you three minutes of time to speak for a grand total of 30 minutes altogether. So whenever you're ready, if the first person, raise your hand. Nothing, but anyway. There will not be a second one at the end of the meeting. This is it. Okay. Nothing. I see nothing from the public. I will close the public portion then. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, though. Okay. Onto appointments. I'll take a motion. So moved.
Appointment stays through all the way to the end.
All the way through the end. These are our biannual appointments. We have to do these before July 1st. Nothing has changed since we did it at our reorganization in January, correct?
Correct. Nothing has changed.
Okay.
I know. I know. But we do need a second one. Yours was, you forgot to say the second one. Okay. Very good. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any questions or comments? As I said, these are all the same as what we did in January. We just have to do it every six months because we are on a off year now with the new elections.
Right. It's the new elections. There are some things that we do.
Which are not new anymore, but it's still different.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question.
Yes.
I have a few. Under Act, Adoption of Parliamentary Procedures as outlined in Robert's Rules of Order, I'm just wondering how familiar we are all with the Robert's Rules of Order. I explained that I myself am new to the Robert's Rules of Order, so I'm just wondering whether this will also include a review for us.
No, it does not normally include a review. What it is, is we are agreeing that those are the rules that we will follow. They are basically the same rules that are set up in the bylaws, which I think you were provided a copy with in January. So it's basically those same, the bylaws have the Robert's Rules of Orders embedded in them, so it is basically the same thing. So we can at any time refer back to those if we have questions about procedure.
Okay. And if I may, for H, I'm just, I must have missed maybe something in the material. What does the GAAP stand for and the GASP stand for?
Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And so that has to do with accounting and other procedures and charted accounts, a little charge of the budget lines, too.
Okay. Thank you. And for T, I see that our superintendent is a representative to the Dover Emergency Management Council as a, let me just read it again, sorry. That our superintendent is the Board of Education representative, so I'm wondering how that have worked, even though he's a superintendent, and superintendent, Mr. Becker will also be the Board of Ed rep to this council?
I'll let him explain.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. My role is to actually attend the emergency management meetings on behalf of the Board of Education. Some years, we have tabletop exercises. We have training exercises, and that's the philosophical, what we would do in the event of an emergency. In the event that there is a community challenge, I'll give you an example. Sandy, during Sandy, a schoolmaker, Mr. Bullock, myself, and Mr. Gomes came down, set up the schools, had everything ready, and we set up evacuation and triage centers to provide assistance to, and bus drivers in the event that town needed evacuation. So those are the types of things that we work on. It's not really represented in terms of representing the board in the fact of kind of a position.
Exactly, representing the district because of the use of our facilities for this.
It's more of a point of contact to make sure things do get put into place, and that was probably a good example because all of us left our homes and our families to be down here setting up to make sure that we had all the evacuation and food and everything else ready to go. We had cots in the gym. We have contingency plans involving the mall for anything from smallpox to vaccines to almost any kind of situation, you name it, we provide it. But generally, it's weather-related, and we involve our buses, and we have high flooding areas, we can evacuate our population and get them out. I do want to mention that it's crucial because we count on volunteers to do this. Mr. Gomes was here the entire time with us. Mr. Chappell came down for the buses, and all of it was non-bullying volunteer hours, which is quite valuable. And I don't know if too many people in the community know how much was done to try to safeguard their personal well-being in the event of that storm. But that's just an example of what we do. Do you leave anything out?
Right. The immunization clinic that we held here for three days?
Yeah. The H1N1, we, that's a good point. We organize that. So the town came up, they provided the supplies, we provided the organization sign-in and crowd control for it. Those are the types of activities that it encompasses. So it's really more of a preparation and action-based than it is representative on a council.
Thank you.
That it?
That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then we will do a roll call. Okay. Mr. Brucio. Ms. Dodd? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Very good. Onto approval of the minutes. We have regular session and executive session from June 13th.
Second.
Second, table motion. We have second. Any questions, comments, corrections? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. Communications, please, Ms. Chenish.
We have two thank you notes from students, Venetia Cepedes and Gabriela Mendoza, for the scholarships that they received.
Beautiful. Very, very nice. And we thank them for their thank you notes. Onto Board Secretary and Treasurer report. Ms. Laurie?
We approve the Board Secretary and Treasurer reports, month ending May 31, 2017, with a cash balance down to $1,925,4961.
Very good.
Second.
With motion and second. Any questions or comments? Okay. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd? Yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Laurie. Superintendent's report. Mr. Becker, please.
Thank you, ma'am. We recommend the out-of-district placement and transportation for the students as noted on a database we receive. Basically, this encompasses all the balance of the students, or the balance of the students who need services, with the exception of course students who are still waiting for contracts from the out-of-district schools.
Second to the motion. We have a second. Any questions, comments? No questions, comments? Okay. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And then the next item, we recommend travel authorization for professional development. You'll notice this is all for Mr. Nelson. He did achieve a grant. Everything is fully paid for, and it only requires one school day during the year that he has to be excused from his classes. So we recommend approving this authorization, also thanking Mr. Nelson for his proactive demeanor to achieve the grant.
We have a motion and a second.
And then he'll come back to the district and, I guess, share.
Turnkey, what he's looking at.
Yeah, right.
Excellent. Very, very good. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Personnel. Mr. Miller?
Make a motion. The board approved staff and extra services appointments for 2016, 17, and 2018, two years listed, one through 18. We have everything from playing director to all the positions for coaching and all the sports and other positions, tackle rap, social workers, et cetera, and some of the other advisors that exist within all the classes and some of the programs that we grant. So that's one through 18.
Very good. We have a second, tablet here. A second. Okay. Any questions, comments, anyone?
I have a question, Madam President. For number 13, I see we have a nice list of coaches, and I see that we have an assistant coach for the girls at DMS Dover Middle School, but I didn't see any other of the positions marked Dover Middle School, so I'm just curious if we, if that's the only position we have at Dover Middle School?
No, it's not. These are the balance of the positions we had in the vote previously.
Right. We had voted on other coaches.
So now, so now all the positions are filled after this? I don't know if that's.
I'm reticent to say all.
Right.
Let's say 90 percent.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In number four, the fifth one, permission for due, what is that? Is that a tayfaw?
Play, play. Yep. Play, play.
It's supposed to be fall? Okay.
No, no, no.
Should it be fall?
Is it fall?
Okay.
So it's not play.
Okay. I just wondered, it was like something I'd never heard of before. I was.
Thank you for answering that.
That is fine. We play.
I thought it was. Yeah. I thought it was.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Curriculum and co-curricular activities. Mr. Scarnio, could you take that from Mr. Chenish, ma'am?
Now, I move the board approves or drafts the following resolutions, one through four. Second.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Okay. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scarnio. Community relations. Ms. Laurie, could you take that, please?
Yes. We have the menograms, which, as you probably noted, I love how they gave a synopsis of the year so everyone could go back and remember things and also just see how much was actually done during the year. B, I move we approve that we had, we had notification of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, June 9, 2017, through June 23, 2017.
Thank you. Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, I move we approve the second reading. The first reading had been accomplished on May 30, 2017, of policy 0141.3, Board Member Use of Internet Social Networks and Other Forms of Electronic Communication. This policy has been provided by the New Jersey School Boards Association.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Everybody's good? Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laurie. Buildings and ground. Ms. Dodd?
Hi. I said the board approves the use of Dover school facilities as follows. The high school march on Dan, the field, it's quite a long day, yeah.
Yep. The whole season.
Yes.
Okay. We have a second. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Okay. Very good. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dodd. Onto budget and finance again, Ms. Laurie.
Sorry. Okay. I move we approve and/or adopt the Boeing resolutions as listed. Big list here because it's that time of year again.
Okay. We have a motion and we do have a second.
On the procurement regulations.
Those are contracts that.
Contracts.
Good.
But again, it's not very different.
No. This is something that's come out in the last few years, and we have to list contracts that entered into during fiscal year or we anticipate for the new fiscal year.
And were you asking more so, is anything different?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the same ones.
No.
It's the same. They're basically all the same.
Okay. Very good. Very good. And we're moving through item, sorry, page 16, number 17. Uh, number 19, I'm sorry. 19, 16, 17. Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Madam President, number 15.
Yes.
It states that we will permit the transfer of anticipated excess current revenue or unexpended appropriations. Where is this excess or unexpended appropriations coming from?
So at the end of the year, if we are to have some excess surplus, we have the option of moving some monies into reserves for the future use.
And do we have excess now, or we won't know till?
We anticipate that we will. I don't have an exact figure as of yet.
And I'm just, what, where is the excess coming from? So I know we have budgetary concerns, so I'm wondering where the excess is coming from.
Well, I think we talked about that at the last meeting also, besides talking about it at the budget hearing, we talked about when we transfer things from one line item to another. If we have, for example, if our cable bill or internet bill is less than what we budgeted for, I mean, there's a little bit left over, we will transfer it to, and either a line item where it's needed or into reserve. Right. Same thing for any, well, there are certain things that cannot be transferred into it that have to be used 100 percent.
Right. Also, sometimes we have, actually, in the last few years, we've had unanticipated revenues that could be, say, like, for instance, interest income on our cash accounts, you know, it's higher than what we budgeted, so that would also be an item that would go into surplus.
So right now, we don't have the budget in front of us to know where this anticipated excess is coming from?
We don't have an exact figure because the month's not over yet, but we have to have this resolution in place in the future. And the other thing is, do we have notification of whether we're going to get our payment, our term payment from this day? Did you know payment coming in July?
But we don't know.
So we won't know yet. Have you heard anything? Or? Well, it's always delayed, and again. And we don't know. Okay. It will be delayed. It will be delayed. Okay. All right. Thank you. So some of this other stuff comes into play. That is not in our control, and that's one of them. Right. That's exactly it.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Very good. Roll call then, please. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Shower?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Laurie. Dover report from Mine Hill, Mr. Brucio is not here, but we have scheduled another Mine Hill committee meeting for July 18 at 16:00. Very good. Onto old business. We had our high school graduation. We had our eighth grade moving up ceremony. Is there anyone who would like to talk about either one of these things? Give us a little review. Ms. Phillips, would you like to talk about eighth grade?
The eighth grade moving up ceremony was so good. I loved those kids. I was so happy. I did not know, well, I thought that it was particularly moving when the, because I've never seen him before, but the little boy in the wheelchair, like, when he came up to get his diploma, everybody clapped, and there was another boy who lives across the street from me, and he came up, and he has a walker, and all the kids clap. I've never, the little boy across the street, obviously, I've seen him, the boy in the wheelchair, I've never seen him before, that was the greatest thing ever, so I tried not to cry.
Make him cry.
But I enjoyed it a lot, just because I know a lot of those kids, and so to see them moving up to high school.
Awesome.
To give them their little diploma.
I'm glad you enjoyed it. That's great. Very, very good.
And I have something to add.
Yes, please.
What a lovely class they are. It is such a lovely class, and the families, it was very, very enjoyable. Really, it's going to be great to have that class come up to the high school, and they're going to really make a place for themselves, so.
That's all we have to hear. That's great. And high school graduation. Anyone want to say anything?
That was wonderful. Of course. I particularly enjoyed Mr. Miller and Mr. Becker's pieces where they highlighted some of the achievements that maybe the community might not otherwise know, and it was exciting to hear and to see that, and to see all the students really excited about their peers. It was a very moving ceremony, the memorial to Jack, the salutatorian and valedictorian's message of "We Are Better Together." Our principal gave a great speech about roots and solidarity and diversity. It was really exciting to see the teachers there and really rooting for the students, and clearly, you know, and some of the board members, too, just as giddy and excited as the parents and the students, so it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful graduation.
And I just want to add, too, it was really nice, you know, sometimes you have the clapping, you'll have the most popular students, a lot of clapping, but they were, they were clapping for everybody in equal, you know, so that was very nice.
Very, very nice. Anybody else?
I will say, after 14 graduations that I've attended, I still cannot get over the joy that it is to hand these students their diplomas and see the smiles on their faces. It really makes everything else we do for the whole year worthwhile.
It really does. That's our reason for being, actually, when we see that. Yep. Very good. Anyone else?
For me, it was, it was great because this was the last class that I, as a parent volunteer, that I had worked with a lot of students either at band camp or football games or other place, so it's amazing to see how much the students have grown, to know So, it's amazing to see how much the students have grown, to know that they're going to be very successful with the launch, whatever they decide they want to do. And I know that many of our students are very successful already.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's really fantastic. You know, we got out of there in an hour.
We did.
I went to another graduation ceremony, and they had less people, I think it was almost two hours.
Yes. We really moved.
I don't know if they did it last year, because I missed last year, but the concert choir doing the song.
Oh, isn't that beautiful?
The model was absolutely fabulous.
Beautiful. And I love that we still engage the seniors in both of that, into the choir and to the band.
Their last hurrah.
Their last hurrah, that I know it's meaningful to them, and it's just as meaningful to us. Very good. Okay. At this point, we are, before moving on to our board retreat and our first agenda item of our ethics review, I'm going to ask if we could have a quick recess, because this is going to be the longer part of our meeting. So, for anyone who needs a quick recess, can we, I'll take a motion to recess for just five minutes.
Salute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And we will be right back.
Salute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good, everyone. Here we are. We have some wonderful guests with us this evening. We have Ms. Charlene Peterson from New Jersey School Board, who is our field representative, and Mr. John Burns' attorney, who is legal counsel to New Jersey School Boards and to all of its members. They have an ethics presentation for us, so take it away, Charlene.
Thank you so much. My name is Charlene Peterson, and I'm the field service rep for your school district. I cover Morris County and Essex County, and provide direct services to boards, so it's my pleasure to be here tonight and be part of your board retreat. Typically, when boards have a retreat, you know, we appreciate the fact to come in, it's a chance to kind of work with the board in a more casual environment, and ethics training is usually the most popular and prevalent training that we do, because it's something that the state requires that you do every year, so if you have to do it, you might as well come and have us do it for you. I'm going to have John introduce himself.
Thank you, Charlene. I have worked for the School Board Association for, I don't know, 18 years now, and in that role, we aim to provide you as board members with the most up-to-date legal information available, so that you have the information you need to make the best decisions that you can.
So, we're just going to take you through this training process, and want you to, you know, consider this to be your training. So, this is your time to ask any questions you want, to interject whenever you want, stop me at any, you know, at any time. I was doing this last night, and we ended up going somewhere completely different than where the PowerPoint went, just based on questions that the board members had. So, you know, please feel free to just at any time, and I told John the same thing, whenever he feels like he has something that can add to the presentation, so please do that. So, just consider this a free back-and-forth discussion with the board. So, having said that, like I said, ethics training is something that the state requires of every board member on an annual basis. And as we think about it, and as board members, you know, I often hear board members refer to yourselves as volunteers. I hear a lot of people saying, you know, I've put all this time in, I'm a volunteer. Really, what we're asking you to do is think of yourself differently. Want you to think of yourself as an elected public official. You just don't have to get paid for doing it. But as an elected public official, think about the fact that people voted for you. People have confidence in you. People are asking you to do work on their behalf. And in exchange for that, there's some expectation that you are going to behave, and you are going to respond in a certain way. So, that's what the School Ethics Act said, that as a public official, that you have to make sure that you hold the respect and the confidence of the people that elected you, and avoid conduct that's in violation of their public trust. And also, an important piece of this is underneath there, and it's said, conduct that creates a justifiable impression. So, as we think about that, an example that I use that seems to explain it well is, there's a situation where there are two board members sitting at the board table, sitting across from each other, they were both texting. Someone was sitting in the audience, saw that. To that person's mind, those two could have been having their own meeting and texting back and forth. In actuality, someone could have been getting the grocery list from home, someone could have been checking the weather, or sports scores, or something, and it had nothing to do with it. But to the person sitting in the audience, it left a justifiable impression that perhaps they were having their own board meeting, that person filled out a request to see what was on their phones, and so just, you know, because of that impression that was left. So, you need to think about your conduct. You need to think about the way you operate at the board table as a board member, and think about your conduct not only from the perspective of whether it's a violation, but also what kind of an impression is it leaving? And use that to kind of guide your behavior, guide your thoughts, guide the way that you as a board operate, knowing that you have that responsibility as well. So, the School Ethics Act is kind of a broad act, and in order to help enforce it, the School Ethics Commission was created, we're going to talk about that in just a minute. The Code of Ethics themselves, again, are going to review those. We're going to go through what constitutes a conflict of interest, what are those times that you're not able to vote, that you're not able to participate because of a conflict that you might have, disclosure statements that we're all required to fill out, that provide any employment in financial interests, and then also our training requirements. You know, one of the things that we don't really realize is that as board members, you are the most highly trained public officials. You're the only public official that has mandatory training. So, as we think about it, our first three years of board service, we are required to attend training, and then every time after that that you are re-elected, you are required to attend board training. And I know I've had board members, you know, saying, "I've been on my board for 20 years, do I really still have to go back to training after I'm re-elected?" And the answer is yes, that it's required. So, for that training, every time you are re-elected, it is legal updates, which is something that is certainly changing, you know, within that three-year period from the last time that you are re-elected. And, you know, and it is important, you know, not only to take advantage of that mandatory training, but consider the opportunities that training does provide to you as a board member, the opportunities that are available to you. And, you know, I think we're finding more and more that in order for you to be effective at what's going on at your board table, you need to be aware of what's going on away from it, and bring that back here, so that you can do a more effective job here for your community. You know, and the state does track the mandatory training, that we do have to provide the names of those members that are not applying. So, it is important to take advantage of it, not only for the benefit of your board, but it also is required of them. So, we mentioned the School Ethics Commission, and we said that that's the group then who oversees all of this, and it's interesting, because a lot of times, as we go through this, and we're going to talk about some of these things, and a lot of times, people will question, "Who came up with this?" And I want you to remember back to this slide, that these are the people that came up with this. So, the School Ethics Commission is supposed to be a nine-member board that's appointed by the governor for a three-year term. There can be no more than five from any one political party, and it's made up of two board members, two school administrators, and five non-school officials. The challenge that we sometimes find ourselves is, while I said it's supposed to be nine members, they're not often there, right? I think they're at like, six right now?
Right. No, they do have some vacancies right now as well.
So, you know, about, I don't know, three or four years ago, when we saw, I guess it was more like two or three years ago, when all these advisory opinions came out, and it really changed the way that we're doing things and seeing things that are reflected here in this presentation, and there were like 30-something came out in one year. What we found out was that they were down to five members, and it takes six for them to agree to make an advisory opinion public. So, it took a couple of years for them to get that sixth member, so then when they did, then all of a sudden, all of this stuff was released back from two or three years, that all came out in one huge batch. So, we're kind of thinking that we're in that same situation right now, that even though they have six for a while, for a long while now, there hasn't been any more than five at a meeting. So, we haven't seen any new advisory opinions come out recently, so we're kind of waiting, thinking maybe this door might hit again, we're not sure.
And keep in mind that the School Ethics Commission operates much like your local board does, they meet on a monthly basis, and they do two things. One, they issue advisory opinions. And these are, the School Ethics Commission issues both public and private advisory opinions. The advisory opinions come from you as school officials, they can come from school administrators, they can come from board members. There is also an opportunity to ask for an advisory opinion on behalf of one of your fellow school officials, if they themselves don't feel the, like they should ask the question themselves, there is an opportunity for one of their fellow school officials to also ask for that question. So, what occurs is, the School Ethics Commission receives an advisory opinion, the first thing that occurs is, the staff of the School Ethics Commission will draft an opinion. The draft then goes to the School Ethics Commission itself, where they will discuss that opinion and approve that opinion, or send it back to staff for further review. So, in general, if you are seeking an advisory opinion, it takes roughly around five to six weeks to get a response back, depending on when in the cycle of their meetings, you actually send them that advisory opinion. The strength of an advisory opinion is this, if the School Ethics Commission issues you an advisory opinion with regard to your prospective conduct, you can then rely upon that advisory opinion as if it was law. If, for whatever reason, someone files a complaint against you alleging that that conduct violated the act, you can then use that advisory opinion as your defense to that alleged complaint. Now, where there is an advisory opinion that the School Ethics Commission believes would be beneficial to all members, all school officials, to hear about, they will then take a vote to make that advisory opinion public. When they do that, they will take out any identifying information of the person who asked, so that when the rest of the general public sees it, it is worded in such a way that you can't identify the school district board or board member. The strength of the public advisory opinion is that, again, board members can then rely upon it as if it was law, and that can then guide their conduct. Second thing that the School Ethics Commission does is that they issue ethics complaints. When someone files a complaint against the school official, the School Ethics Commission will hear that complaint, and they will make determinations on that complaint. The first thing that they do is they will first see if the conduct alleged may actually constitute a violation of the School Ethics Act. If, in the School Ethics Commission's opinion, it's obvious on its face that the conduct alleged would not be a violation of the act, the School Ethics Commission has the power to essentially issue a dismissal right then and there. But where, in the opinion of the commission, a violation may have occurred, what they will then do is they will engage in fact-finding. And when this occurs, they will send the complaint to the administrative law judge, and the administrative law judge will do fact-finding, and will make an initial determination, and then after that initial determination is made, they will then send it back to the School Ethics Commission to confirm those findings, and then the School Ethics Commission will also make a recommendation as to the penalty. That is roughly the process with regard to school ethics complaints. Now, once the School Ethics Commission makes a finding of a violation and a recommendation as to the penalty, then it goes to the commissioner. The commissioner only has the power to determine whether or not, in his or her view, the punishment fits the crime. The commissioner does not have the authority to disturb the underlying finding of whether or not there was a violation. The commissioner only has the authority to change the recommended penalty. And that is, in a nutshell, in general terms, how the School Ethics Commission process works.
You know, just to differentiate, so the advisory opinion is conduct that hasn't happened yet, and then a violation is if somebody thinks that, you know, that something has occurred, so that's just...
So, if an advisory opinion is issued, it can be used as a shield to guide the way that you should behave. But what if an advisory position, opinion is issued, can the public then use that as a sword to say, "Well, you violated this, and it's not a law yet"?
That is true. If, for whatever reason, a complaint has been filed alleging that a violation of the act has occurred, a complaint could certainly point to one of the public advisory opinions that was issued previously with regard to that conduct.
Okay. So, we now use that then to guide our behavior, and it's expected that they actually will rule a little more harshly, because they're saying, "If we already told you how we would rule against it if you did this, and now you went ahead and did it, well, we already told you it was a violation," then, you know, they've already made their point clear.
And if I could make a plug for the School Ethics Commission, let me say this, when requesting an advisory opinion, it only costs the cost of a stamp. And so, if at any time you ever have questions about your own conduct or the conduct of one of your fellow officials, to send off a letter to the School Ethics Commission with your question, again, it is a free service that the state offers, and it only costs a stamp.
You know, and sometimes it's like when you find yourself in a situation that, maybe things have changed, or you're not sure, you know, one of the most recent one advisory opinions that came out was someone who was married to someone who worked in the school district, so that was their conflict, they were getting a divorce. So, now the person said, "Am I still conflicted? If I'm not married anymore, did I lose my conflict?" So, they asked the School Ethics Commission for an advisory opinion, and the response that came back said, "Well, if there's still any financial ties between the two of you, that they would still then consider that person to be conflicted." So, that's a situation, you know, where your status had changed, you weren't sure what your, you know, what your situation was, so they helped clarify that of the person.
And it's important to remember, we're talking about prospective conduct. You cannot ask for an advisory opinion with regard to conduct that has already taken place. Should that occur, there have been rare instances where the School Ethics Commission has converted that request for an advisory opinion into a complaint. So, again, what this means for you as school officials is, you need to take the time to really think about, gee, do I have any potential conflicts that I need to be, I need to have addressed? Are there issues that are coming up in the next month or two that I will need to have an advisory opinion for? Do I need to go and check with School Boards Association, or check with the board attorney with regards to whether or not there has already been any kind of complaint decisions or advisory opinions issued with regard to my conduct, or do I need to go and seek an advisory opinion? Again, you know, we often talk about, and also prevention is worth the power to cure, certainly with regard to any potential conflicts that we may have, the School Ethics Commission does offer that service, and it will help to pattern your conduct.
Okay, so now we're going to go through the Code of Ethics. So, typically, the way we do this is, I'll have each one of you take a turn reading it, just the top part, or else you've also got it on the, behind the PowerPoint, there's like a vanilla-colored handout that also has the Code of Ethics. So, you're just going to read it, and then we'll stop, and we'll talk about each one. So, if you want to go ahead and get started and read this.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state's organization and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
So, this is the state's way of telling us, you know, there are things that the state places upon us that we're responsible for, such as PAR, the state standards, things like that, that you as a board member are responsible for holding and implementing in your district. So, this is one of the ways that the state holds us accountable for doing that. You know, and we're finding it coming into question, you know, there were some boards that passed resolutions against PAR. So, then that kind of raised the question, is that a violation of this Code of Ethics? I mean, it's never been tested, but when you look at things where boards are taking action against a state requirement, the question has arisen whether it would be, you know, a violation of this Code of Ethics or not. Hey, I'm going to read the next one.
I will make decisions in terms of the education and welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
And the important thing here, or are those two words, "all children"? When you think about the fact that, you know, you have, glad to see you have people in your audience here, when people are here, they're here sometimes representing their own child, representing a neighborhood, representing a school, representing a certain situation or part of the population. When you're sitting on this side of the board table, and you need to look at these situations through a different lens, you need to ask yourself the question, how is it impacting all of the children, all of the students in the district, not just this one group that someone else can have a concern about? You need to take that lens and broaden it, and say, what is the impact to all of the students? Okay?
I will comply with board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans, only asking the board to have consulted those who will be affected by them.
One of the things that we're seeing here is the state is helping you as board members understand or identify what your role is. So, we say, you know, your role is a policymaking body, so this is one of the ways that they are, you know, helping explain that, and, you know, I saw it tonight on your agenda that as a board, you have policies, and it's important that most boards have two readings of their policies, because PAR here where it says that, you know, we should consult those who might be affected by them. So, the first reading of a policy then puts the policy out there, the public has a right to know it, see it, know what it's about, have some time to digest it and reflect on it, and then come back to you before your second meeting, for the second reading of it, and let you know, how is that going to impact them? So, then you now can take that into consideration before you vote to formally adopt this policy after the second reading, yes?
So, then, is it, because I don't think that we've had such a policy yet that affected the public, our policy has been kind of internal that we had a first reading for? So, when that happens, is the public supposed to get like a printed version of that policy, or how do they then participate in that first reading?
Well, it may be when they come to the first reading and hear that this policy is out there and it might impact them, that they can then get a copy of it to determine how, like, let's say sometimes, if you're going to have a policy, like sometimes, some districts may have a school uniform policy, so that might be a policy that's going to impact everyone. So, they might make that available to the community and let them know that at this meeting, we're going to be talking about this situation, so that they can hear what the community has to say about it. Thank you. We just have some hypotheticals here too, as we're going through these, and one of them we talked about already, and this was the board member that wanted the board to adopt a top-down policy for PAR. And these hypotheticals are just examples, some of them to say, yes, this is our role, and some of them to say that perhaps this is not our role. So, the next one is the board directing the superintendent to develop a process that engages the staff, community, and parents in a strategic planning initiative. So, if you look, as you look at that, and most of you are shaming... So if you look, as you look at that, and most of you are shaking your heads, yes, that's because that is something that would be in your role, and one of the most important parts of it are the words "the board directing," to make sure that it's clear that we understand that it's individuals, that's not our role, but as a board, we do have the responsibility to ask our superintendent to, you know, to do something like that, to engage our community. This next one is the board personnel committee agreeing without consulting and consent of the superintendent besides to interview all the teacher candidates. So, you know, we're all shaking our head like, no. So you can see why there are, like, how you can step over that line and do things that are not within your role as a board.
I did have a question about that last one. Would asking the superintendent to give start aspects of personnel, for example, requesting that the superintendent to do another process, either in his hiring, in his interviewing, would that be appropriate for the board to ask that they, that the superintendent take another step in his hiring process?
If you want to go?
Well, sure. With regard to hiring, the statute says that the superintendent recommends, and then the board approves or disapproves of that hiring. Certainly, a board could ask for the superintendent to amend his hiring procedures if he so chose, but there isn't anything in statute that says that the board gets to regulate the superintendent's process, as long as his process is nondiscriminatory, then the board itself doesn't really have a say with regard to that process. Now, if you take a situation where a candidate comes with a board, the board is not satisfied with that candidate for whatever reason, and rejects that candidate, the superintendent then brings another candidate forward for that same position, and again, the superintendent, excuse me, the board rejects that candidate, and let's say it happens a third time, maybe then the board might say, excuse me, the superintendent might say to the board, "Well, gee, board, what is it that you are looking for in your hiring process, so that we can come to an agreement, because there is a position that I need to fill?" But there isn't anything that says that the board gets to regulate the superintendent's hiring process.
Okay, thank you.
So the board's involvement in that process really is the evaluation of the superintendent. So you hold the superintendent accountable for providing you, you know, the best qualified staff, and the way then that you hold the superintendent accountable for doing that is by not getting involved in the process, but by holding that person accountable for doing that. Yes, you pressed.
Okay. I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
Anyone that's mentioned a Jersey School Boards training, you know, that's kind of our mantra, right? You've heard it over and over and over, but I guess there's a good reason for it, and it's basically a simple way to help describe what your role is. So how do you as a board see that the schools are well-run? And we kind of just talked about, you know, one important way a minute ago is through the evaluation of the superintendent. Another important way is setting the goals every year. So when you set your district goals, you're identifying what are those priorities for the year? What are those four or five things that we think are so important this year that we're going to hold the superintendent accountable for doing those things? So those are how you set the priorities, and that's how you set the superintendent, hold the superintendent accountable for achieving them. So if you're not in the schools, you are not running the schools, you are looking at that, you know, perspective from that 50,000-foot view, and helping set the direction, and then require the accountability for that direction. Okay?
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.